We'd like to call the order, the October 10th meeting of the Clive City Council. Would the clerk please call roll?
Mayor Edwards.
Here.
Number is Weaver.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Michel Anani.
Here.
Judkins.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
Very good. You all would rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm not aware of any changes in the agenda.
Approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve the agenda for discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, the agenda is approved. Next time we have is systems presentation. This is the opportunity for anyone to approach the council on an item that is not on the agenda. And Pete, while you check to see if anyone is online, if there's anyone in the chamber that wishes to address the council, they may come forward to the podium and identify themselves. And let me remind everyone that Clive follows the pillars of character counts in everything that we do to promote and model the principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and civility. So again, in our business and with everyone that's here, we expect everyone to follow those principles. Pete, do we have anyone online?
No, your honor.
And do we have anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the council? If so, please approach the podium. Seeing no one approaching the podium, we will move to consent.
Approval.
Second.
Motion second on consent. Further discussion, if not, all those in favor, please vote. And would clerk please post that vote? If we're opposed to coming out.
Oh, stops.
I, my link is not currently working.
See, I knew we'd have to have a voice.
Yeah, you're right.
Like come up to him.
Yeah. At the A door. Hey, we have the three we need. And that does pass by a vote of, I believe, five to zero. Oh, but you were affirmed before you know it. You weren't gonna, you weren't opposed to the agenda?
I said aye.
With the new system, there's no bypass unless you mark present.
For some reason, the link just wasn't opening. Now it has.
Okay, again, just to reaffirm, our agenda's been approved by a vote of five to zero, so.
That was consent, I think, your honor.
Oh, sorry. They consent what?
Both are five to zero.
Both are five to zero, your honor.
Both, both were.
You're correct, and so is he.
Let's move on to our presentations, Jeff.
Mayor, council, good evening. My pleasure to introduce a new employee to you with the retirement of Randy Howell, who had 25 years with us, retired just last Friday. We had an opening. Fortunately, we were able to bring Kayden in. He's been here a little bit, but he is Randy's replacement. Comes to us, has spent three summers working for the city of Urbendale and their public works department, and comes to us as a new public works operations specialist. With that, I want to introduce you to Kayden Ziegler.
Nice to meet you all. Very thankful for the opportunity. I've enjoyed my time so far, and I'm very excited for what the future holds.
Very good. Welcome. We're glad you're here.
Welcome.
How's Kayden? Have you operated Ziegler heavy equipment before? Spun it ass. But you have seen the big difference between the south side of Hickman and the north side of Hickman, I would imagine, right? The Urbendale versus the Clive side is night and day.
He's not falling for it.
Welcome. We're glad you're here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kayden. And you have some improvements to tell us about.
Yes, our process improvement. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce you to Jonah Crowley, who's going to come up and talk to you about our continuous improvement project. And Jonah's been with us for a couple of years now.
About a year and a half now.
Yeah.
Coming up on a couple, so. Good to see you all again.
Want to turn it over to Jonah and let him talk about this.
Right on. So I'm here to rivet you all for the next 30 to 45 minutes about our continuous improvement over at Public Works.
Why so short?
Oh, just a couple of musical numbers. I didn't want to overwhelm you with music. So what we're talking about today is a piece of equipment that was only brought out once, maybe twice a year. And it's a crane that we use to hold open a really heavy gate so we can see a flap gate or a sluice gate so that we can see if it's going up or down when we're just checking it for maintenance.
You can, you can hit spacebar to progress it.
Oh, right on.
There you go.
All right, look at this. Now, there's some backbreaking work over at Public Works, right? One, one thing is taking out the old silt baskets that are in that storm intake. They're very heavy. They fill up with dirt and you have to take a, take a manhole hook with another person and you gotta try to get it out, get it onto the road, pick it up and put it in the back of a pickup truck. It's kind of dangerous because, you know, you're, you're dealing with an open hole and it's really heavy. So, you know, chances for slippage and then just dropping it all the way into the manhole, which is a pain. It's a big pain. Also, when you're doing inspections on an intake, you have to open up the grate and you have to do your inspection. And then when you go put the grate back on, sometimes it falls in. Oh, great. Now I gotta get that out of the manhole too. So we wanted to find a better way to do both those things. Getting the soapboxes out and getting the grates out if they're dropped in. Now, a lot of people would just stay with the status quo and just, you know, do the manual labor. But then some people are safety minded and have actually done the work, right? And then and they want to find a better way. So they wanted to take that crane that was only being used once a year, find a way to fit it onto the back of a truck so that we could just take the silk boxes using the crane and get it right in the back of the truck immediately. Jeff Nuss, he came up with the idea and working together with Chase Berry, who's a hot shot of a operator, a real five tool player, probably, you know, there's, there's nothing, he's, there's nothing that he can't do. And if he's not one of the best, he's the best at it, right? So, so such a good operator. He got together with Jeff and Jeff tasked him with making a mount to go on the back of a pickup truck for the crane. So you'll see right there, a bunch of components being, I don't know, I don't even know. Welded, cut, gathered, grinded, sanded, painted. Right there, this is work that Chase did. And that's the final product. Chase was able to do all of this within six hours, so he had time to go out and clean some sewers too, so. And there's it in operation, handsome fellow right there. And I was, that's, that's me, you know, I was tasked to go out there because just in case it didn't work, they needed a grunt to get it out. Me do, so. It really, it saves so much time. It saved your back and it's safer. The best part about it is all the materials used to make it were on hand, so it cost zero dollars. And then there's a storm grate being pulled out of a drain, which is it's awesome. Any questions?
Did you patent this?
We should. I think, I think it's a great idea. I'll let Chase and Jeff do that.
When you said you had a tool that didn't come out but once or twice a year, I thought it was Weaver.
That's how we're gonna be tonight.
Back, back to your process improvement. You know, Public Works has a long history with doing some definitive Public Works projects. It really helped you guys out from, from when you won the Building the Better Mousetrap Award, which is a statewide award with some things that you've done. This just shows a consistency with how to do process improvement. And I think one of the things that, that with this Dabba crane and be able to utilize this is, is a couple, a couple other long lasting things. One of the facts is the reduction of injuries and which results in reduction of workers' compensation claims, which results in reduction or our mod rating being so low, one of the lowest in the industry, which means we get much, much better rates on this. So really kudos to, to the whole team that worked on this. You know, this is the kind of lean process improved process that really makes Clive special. Our special sauce is innovation of our employees and you guys did a great job on this.
Yeah, and that's Chase Berry and Jeff Nuss, two studs. I mean, awesome. Jeff's sitting right there. There's a reason I'm doing this and he's not because he doesn't want to, you know, brag about this kind of stuff. But, you know, Chase, Chase and Jeff, they don't call process improvement, process improvement. You want to know what they call it? Another day at the office, so. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks. Great work.
Thanks, Jonah.
All right, we'll move on to our action items. Liz, we've got some geobonds to talk about.
I don't know if I can beat that.
Tough to compete.
Well, I can, maybe, maybe.
Actually, you might be able to.
Yeah. So by now you've received notice from Matt on the news of our bond rating being raised to AAA. Maintaining the top rating will help us keep the costs low on borrowing and when we invest in our infrastructure and our projects. So our bonds will be among the best of investors, a testament to the strength of not only our economy, but also the city's leadership. From Clive's diverse business sectors, skilled workers, to our financial management and thoughtful budgeting, we've maintained a financial position that's among the highest in the state. So I want to congratulate all of you. The action this evening is to approve the resolution setting the date and time for the bond sale of October 24th and authorize the issuance of the preliminary official statement, which was included in your council packet. I also listed the CIP projects that we would like to fund. Staff recommends approval of the resolution.
Questions for Liz, otherwise I intend.
The resolution said the public hearing for October 24th, 2024 at 6:00 PM for the sale of a general obligation urban renewal bond series 2024B and authorizing the use of preliminary official statement in connection thereof.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote? And would clerk please post that? That passes by a vote of five to zero. Amanda.
Good evening, mayor, council. Tonight I have before you a resolution to set public hearing, which would consider amending the zoning ordinance for permitted uses in commercial districts for schools or educational institutions. In 2023, Iowa passed the Students First Act, which has expanded some funding opportunities for private schools. And that has kind of reinvigorated some interest in some additional schools locating within the state and the metro specifically. The city's been approached of what are the opportunities in Clive? So we are bringing it before you tonight to request or ask if you would like staff to go back and prepare an ordinance amendment that would allow schools in commercial districts. Currently, schools are allowed in all the city's residential districts by a special use permit. You know, you can have a small school, you can have a big school, so they're, one of those uses, it's hard to regulate without the special use permit process. It's really kind of intended for those unique situations. So this would be up to you guys if you'd like to set the public hearing.
Very good. Questions for Amanda.
So Amanda, is this is for all commercial districts or were we limiting it to a specific type of commercial?
Yeah, so we did publish the, the resolution tonight, the notice would publish for all commercial districts, any of the C districts. So we could consider any of those as we're drafting the actual ordinance to bring back to you. That does not mean that every single one would necessarily be permitted or even that by setting the public hearing that you would adopt an ordinance that would permit them in any commercial districts. It would just allow us to talk about C1 through five as being opportunities for schools.
And then they would still have to go through a special use permit, even if we do the rezoning. Is that accurate?
I would recommend if there is a desire to allow schools in commercial areas that we would utilize a special use permit.
Right.
So yes, unless you all wanted to just make them permitted uses.
But that would be an extra safeguard to make sure we're putting it in proper places.
Yep, a special use permit, the uses that are identified as requiring a special use permit are permitted if they can meet certain requirements that are laid out in the ordinance, like light and noise, traffic, fire, safety, utilities. So there's a prescriptive requirements in there that they have to meet.
Yeah. Ted and I have talked about this briefly a couple of weeks ago, but I think a few of the things I'm not sure of yet is, or I'm not ready for, is to open that up to every commercial, commercial district. I'm, I'm in favor of trying this, right? And especially in the one that's been mentioned, it seemed an appropriate place. But to broadly open that up gives me concern because one individual in here, close your ears, but, you know, it back to item number three and with no choice when it comes to a, to a car wash or whatever else goes into that place, it ties our hands and it opens that door for anyone to say, yeah, but it's in your, it's in your code and we should be able to put this in.
But yeah, I was gonna ask that, but with the special use permit, that, doesn't that obviate that or no?
To a certain extent, it would. However, if they could demonstrate that they're meeting all of the standards that are laid out for a special use permit, I think our legal counsel would recommend that that would be then a permitted use because it met the standards and that would have to be granted by the board.
That's what gives me the concern, right, is that you open that and they meet those like item seven, there's nothing you can do.
Our hands are tied.
Hands are tied.
The Board of Adjustment would make that decision.
Yes.
On the special use permit.
So I, I'm not.
You want to narrow it, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then we can.
Is there a reason why this, because initially when we talked, it was either C3 or C4, I can't remember which, but it can be limited to just that.
I think what would most likely happen was it'll be limited to one or two of the commercial districts ultimately. But this just is going to give us the staff time to really dive in on those questions if you all wanted us to spend time answering them. This doesn't necessitate that we would allow it in all the districts. It just opens that opportunity up through this process of the ordinance.
I would be in favor of, of eliminate to not one or two, but to one, to the specific district we're talking about as opposed to opening it up to, you know, one, two, three, four, six, whatever.
Well, but I think.
Let's have a narrow focus on this.
Sorry, Eric. I think the point, correct me if I'm wrong, Amanda, was this provides staff the ability to look at all of them so they could come back to us with more of a narrow recommendation.
Correct, yes.
And bet that with plan and zoning commission to come back with a recommendation to you all. So this, this way by keeping it all open, again, as you go through the process, you may decide to direct staff to narrow it based on the, or the different ordinance readings, right? You might say, okay, reading number one, we want to do this. Okay, maybe we want to narrow it down. But now by at least having it all the way open, at least when you're setting the public hearing, you're not limiting yourself, but you can narrow it in as the process goes along and plan and zoning may recommend that to you as well.
But perhaps though, let's narrow that now before we see the first rendition because then it's already out there that we're, that's an option. And I think what you're hearing up here is the consensus of we want it narrowed now, maybe not as narrow as one, but not broad right away. As the first reading, I don't think it should be broad.
Well, this is just the resolution setting.
I get it, I get it, but I'm saying we're not going to talk again before the first reading.
Sure.
And I'm saying I don't want this very broad thing to come to the first reading that already opens the, the genie's bottle that.
I guess I disagree. I don't see the harm in, in allowing staff to look at this, do the necessary research and then come back to us and say, these are the districts that we recommend, one and four or whatever. Not all of them.
Okay.
But, but give them the opportunity to do that and then bring that, that information to us. Because I'm, I'm with you. I want it narrowed, but I'd like staff to have the opportunity to figure out which ones are the right ones.
I see what you're saying. I am open.
Yeah, and it allows plan and zoning commission to also weigh in on that too with staff. Right, yeah. To at least give you advice on. What they're there for, right? Yeah, recommendations.
So what we need is motion on the resolution?
I have a question too.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I do, no, you said first.
It's gonna say, is there an applicant here that, that's driving this that might talk a little bit about the project?
I think it's probably premature to do that right now.
Before the public hearing, I would recommend, yeah.
Also, we just need to act on the resolution and if I get a motion second, then Susan.
Approval.
Second.
Okay. In reading the memo, there was a reference to private school, but that's really not defined as K-12. And I am interested not only in K-12, but community college or, or college related entity. So I'd just like to mention that, that I think we might want to anticipate that kind of opportunity at this time too.
To Susan's point, we had a college over there. Yes, IIT.
Yeah.
Yes, and that predates my time with the city. So I would have to dig in on the records of exactly what approvals that went through and how it came to be in that location unless Doug happens to know.
He does. He's been around.
You know Doug knows.
But to Susan's point, you know, there's a number of satellite campuses, whether it be Iowa State or Iowa or William Penn. And I, I agree. I think we need to have a broad enough.
Or trade schools.
Trade schools.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And our permitted use is stable right now. It just identifies schools generally, but we could always tease that out through this process as well.
Yeah, I, I think that'd be something valuable, especially because, you know, we were talking briefly about this too. You know, there is an aspect of public good for this, right? I don't know, you know, it's probably not appropriate to capture that in, in, you know, ordinance, but that can be one of the factors that we weigh. And I think keeping our options open like that makes sense.
So we have a motion second. Is there further discussion or questions? If not, would council please vote? And would clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of five to zero. Emerald.
Still me. So I also have before you tonight approval of the construction drawings for the Emerald Isle Drive public improvements associated with the Silver Star addition. And so along with that, the actual design plans, there are also a few storm sewer system maintenance agreements that would need to be accepted by the city as well. The existing flows go into private pipe today, so they would be allowed to continue to do so. And this, these maintenance agreements would just give the city the authority to go in and make repairs if something happened to that system and the property owner failed to do so. So we would still maintain a functional stormer utility. All the staff comments on the construction drawings have been addressed aside from acquisition of three of the remaining temporary construction easements that are needed. And on that topic, we have Joel Templeman here tonight representing the applicant. So staff would recommend approval of the construction drawing plans as well as the agreements, the storm sewer maintenance agreements. And then we do anticipate having back before you, probably at your next meeting, the kind of cost share related agreement, once we have finished looking through the bid tabs and everything that we're provided by the developer.
Very good. Thank you, Amanda. So we have questions for Amanda or Joel?
Yes, I do. I have a question for Joel.
Joel.
Good evening. Joel Templeman with the Willis O'Malley Law Firm, 505 Fifth Avenue, Des Moines.
Thanks, Joel. I see the, the letter asking us to do eminent domain for these three easements, temporary easements. I guess what I'd like to know is what efforts have you all done to try to obtain those easements?
Absolutely. And I just wanted to, the reason for my letter, I wanted to bring it to your attention as to, you know, we've secured all but three of them. And with the, with one of the last three, it's the owner of Four Paws. And there's been a lot of dialogue between my client, I think our engineer has been in direct contact with her on multiple occasions. And I believe Amanda has reached out to the owner as well. We've made some modifications to the form of the temporary construction easement that we're proposing, gotten her feedback. I believe her biggest concern has to do with maintaining access to her business throughout the entire construction process of that north-south section, which we're able to do. So I'm anticipating that we'll get that signed temporary construction easement back from her, hopefully within the next couple of weeks. If we're able to secure that, if the construction plans are approved tonight, my client would like to commence construction on that portion, I believe November 4th is their targeted date for that stretch. We have encountered, I guess, more resistance or I don't know if that's the right term or not with two property owners on actually on Emerald Isle Drive on the north side. So the Reiners, Dale and Laura Reiner, and then Hung Fung. So our engineer was in town in August, physically went to all the property owners residences of their, their addresses there. With the Reiners, they answered the door. He explained the reasoning for the temporary construction easement, gave them a copy of the easement document itself. You know, they didn't seem interested. I was not there. This is what I'm hearing from our engineer with, you know, signing that document. I believe he's tried to follow up via phone, didn't get a response. And that's kind of where we are with, with them. I don't know if there's another, we don't have better contact information for them. I don't know if we can get that from the city or Public Works or the community development folks. With regard to the, the Fung property, he showed up. That property is actually being rented, so the tenants answered the door. The tenants were unable to provide any contact information for the owners. He had sent a, I think he tried to call them or send an email to them. And there was no response. Actually, let me see that. He might not have. Yeah, he followed up with them via email, but not receive any response from them either. So, and for those two properties, the temporary construction easement area would, would be the south 10 feet of each one of those respective properties. It's approximately 2,000 square feet for each property. So it's a pretty small area that we'd need for this temporary construction easement. But, you know, as a private developer, we don't have a whole lot of tools at our disposal to, you know, force a private property owner to sign a temporary construction easement. Now, obviously, it's temporary in nature. The construction process is not going to be that lengthy for that short stretch of road. Like any temporary construction easement, we have to restore the property to its original condition once the project's done. But I thought it was important to let you folks know that we're encountering problems with these, I will say two. I'm hopeful that we'll get four paws. And so I don't know if we can do something short of condemnation if, if the city's willing to write a letter to these two property owners saying we're trying to make improvements, explain the project. Maybe that would carry a little more weight, a letter from the city, not initiating condemnation, but trying to get their cooperation in that, during that process, maybe short of condemnation. Because I know that's probably not something you folks want to do. But I think it's important for the developer because they want to get in and make the improvements that we've committed to make for the benefit of our project, but also to the city in general. And so I wanted to have the opportunity to provide you with that information tonight, get your thoughts on it.
Well, so let me just tell you what my philosophy is. It's not, it's irrespective of this project. Condemnation is an absolute last resort, like every other avenue has to be approached first. All due respect, doesn't sound like a whole lot of efforts were made here. An email and going to someone's door one time doesn't sound like we were making a huge effort there. So I feel like some redoubling of efforts could, could be done here a little bit more assiduously where you're, you're proactively trying to, to communicate with these folks. Because personally, I'm a no on any kind of condemnation until, and the idea that we're going to do it so that a car wash can open on time, that doesn't fit my criteria, so.
Okay.
That's just my opinion.
Okay, others?
I do have a comment. I think, given that as a city, we've not wanted to force infrastructure to go into place until such time as a development is ready. We have to be aware that there is the potential. We have to be aware that there is the potential to encounter this kind of difficulty from an adjacent property owner. It would be different if we were going ahead and putting the infrastructure in ourselves and then asking someone to pay us back, and we don't want to do that. So I think it is something that we should look at being a partner on to help carry forward any approach that we've chosen to take.
Well, I'm, I'm fine with a letter from the city, but, um, you know, and, but again, I think the developer could be doing a little bit more here to, to make this happen. And rather than just kind of offloading the burden to the city, saying, hey, why don't you make it happen through a condemnation? Uh, to me, that's a last resort.
And if I may, I'm not trying to skirt our obligation. We just would like a little assistance. If there, if you guys have a different, if staff has a different methodology, we're also sensitive to pestering the private property owner by repeatedly approaching them. We don't want to sour that relationship or anything anymore than it is because you guys were all here during this process to get the rezoning and everything else. The people that are, at least the Reiners, they were very outspoken about our project in the first place. So there, it's gotta be that we were thinking to be a little sensitive with that as well, not trying to be too aggressive with them. I understand your point, and the good thing about this, we're talking about a temporary construction easement. It's not a permanent easement and it's not a fee acquisition. It's a 10-foot strip of ground to allow us to make the public improvements to a public street. We're not putting in a new street. So we're making public improvements. Um, and.
So I get all that. The, the problem is that your letter that was provided to us, the specific ask was for eminent domain, right? As opposed to some city coordination, some communication from the city, that would, that 100% behind that, right? So that's where I had my pause.
And I, I'm kind of with you on that as well. I'd like to see more renewed effort, uh, based on the developer, perhaps, you know, a letter from, from you guys, you know, if you have to go out again as well. It's an initial, an, an initial try. I get that. It didn't come up with maybe the results you wanted to, but I'd like to see some renewed effort and, and maybe after that, that we can discuss a letter from the city outlining it. But I think if you outline in those terms, you know, I think it's a process, Joel, like everything else tonight. But I think, I think the onus is on you guys to continue to try and make that work before the city gets involved.
Yeah, you know, my problem is to rewind back to those discussions, right? And you laid out in front of us, we'll take it from here and do it, and we'll build the roads and all that. Right. I think you should have known of this obstacle, right? And engineers should have known about this obstacle if they've put in infrastructure in cities before. Um, they're very aware with this type of, type of thing. When you're talking eminent domain, I am, I am absolutely against it for this. And I think the legal opinion is very clear from our list. You know, and I'll quote it. One thing is clear, the justification for taking cannot, cannot be economic development activities resulting in increased tax revenues. We have no other reason to take this other than your economic gain and tax increases. And that is very clear that we can't do that. And I totally agree with that philosophy. Cause philosophically I am against eminent domain unless it is for the better of the whole, for the better of the entire residents. This is not, and clearly is not. I mean, I could keep going, the public purpose is divine, is relevant part of possession, blah, blah, blah. You could go into this and you have access to all these things. I mean, in that, I would tell you, we clearly cannot do eminent domain, uh, condemnation, whatever you call it. What I would suggest is, and I think it makes a lot of sense, is go back. I don't know what you've offered them so far, but perhaps offer them some money or something for the inconvenience of using their land to build for your, right, economic gains. And I think maybe a different amount might wake some people up.
Sure.
Well, along, well, sorry. No, so I was just gonna add, along that line, you know, one thing that was going through my head, you know, you were talking about how you gotta restore it back to the way it was anyway. You know, there might be an opportunity to say, hey, we can make some improvements to your, that, you know, that's triple A, and if there's something straightforward that they want done. So maybe it's not necessarily even a check that needs to be written. Maybe it's just something that you can do to help a neighbor out.
Landscaping or something of that nature.
Yep. Good idea.
Well, Matt, what precedent is there for the city sending a letter? Since, but if, if, ask them to work with the developer?
I'm done that. I'm not aware of any precedent, just because this is a very unique situation that we're in. Um, typically in this type of situation, the city is the one building the road. Um, so there wouldn't be, the city would be the one coordinating with the property owners, um, for a public improvement of this type. Or in the case of new, this is kind of one of those weird areas because it's a redevelopment type of area that doesn't, you know, already has some level of infrastructure. You know, there's an existing road there. In newer development areas, it's very typical for developers to be building the roads and then turning them over to the city. But that's typically a greenfield site, uh, where that's happening. So I would say that there isn't much of a precedent for this type of situation unless, I'm, I'm missing something, but this is, this is pretty new to us.
I would point you to six B point 54, sub paragraph two of Bible code. It'll tell you kind of a procedure there, but I defer to you on that.
Okay.
Go and take a look at that.
One thing, the point is just because they can, they want to know what.
We just haven't done it much before.
It's more of a political question.
You would, there's a way to set a procedure, a city procedure that would, and you could do that by resolution.
Exactly. I don't think it's that they don't believe they can, Joel. It's that they want to make sure that they need to.
One thing I wanted to add here, and, and Susan already mentioned it, but you know, this, this is for the betterment of that infrastructure, right? So, and I get your point, Michael, like it is going to predominantly help the car wash in the surrounding lots, right? But it is city infrastructure on some level, right? Like that is a public improvement for those property owners as well, right? When it's done, they should have a better roadway there, right? So I think that, that's something to keep in mind.
But I, but I guess I, I agree with you. And that is true. What Susan said was true. And, but I think part of my problem is, is if all this would have been brought up during the time of the vote, would the vote have been the same? Or would it have been more difficult of a vote if you would have, if they would have said to us during the entire, you know, five months that we took on this one of, and we want you to do condemnation when the time comes? Would you have voted on doing this project? And I, for one, would not vote for condemnation on a long time resident for a car wash. And I don't think some of you else would have at the time when they pitched this project to say, and now they're coming back for condemnation. And look, I'm staying out of the fight. It's not my fight. Um, it's the developer's fight. Well, if I can loop back, is there an objection to having the city sending a, a letter saying, please work with the developers? See if you can come to resolution. Is there? At this point, I do. At this point, I just don't think it's been an email in August and someone dropping by of an engineer that lives out of the state, dropping by in August and not being back in the state. I mean, I would say you should drop by. And I mean, that's a face-to-face thing that you're going to get it at the kitchen table. You're going to get that handshake. And not someone dropping in from wherever, uh, for a day and knocking on the door and missing folks. And then following up with a phone call or an email saying, hey, I was in town and I missed you. I, I'm not ready for the city to be involved.
I'm not either. I'd like to see more concerted effort from the developer.
I agree 100%. So I think they need to do a little bit more.
Consensus, developer needs to do more work. The city's willing to send a letter to encourage, uh,
At the appropriate time.
Yeah. We're not, I don't think they're ready.
Would it be at all helpful if the city reduced some requirements for the width or size of that road? If we needed to do that?
I think I can speak to that. Um, so the road is designed to be a 26-foot back-to-back, uh, curb, which is our kind of minimum, um, for fire and routing and all that. Uh, so the 10-foot is truly to allow for the construction to happen. Um, and it is primarily would serve as the temporary access gravel drive that would have to be put in. Um, so those residents can continue to get to their properties. So really there's no change in the road design that would eliminate the need for, um, that access point.
So if we were to take on the building of the road, we would have had to be doing the same thing.
Yes.
It's just that we asked the developer to do it in this case, so.
Or, or the developer agreed to do it, right? In this case, I mean, or asked to do it to get the project done.
That is something staff probably could have told us for us to consider too. And I, it just wasn't something that we heard from anybody.
The, but the onus is on the developer, right? I mean, it's their project and these developers and engineers put infrastructure in all the time in city roads. And they know what the criteria is to put infrastructure in city roads. And so I would have to argue his engineer should have told him a year ago that this was going to have to happen if he bought that land.
And as Mike said earlier, this was fully predictable, right? We knew the Reiners were against this. I mean, you mentioned it yourself. So this was something that, to me, uh, maybe you should have known upfront that this was going to take a little bit more effort.
Right. Well, and we understand that. We understand that when you do a road project, you need to acquire temporary construction easements. It happens whether a city does it or we do it. It's part of the process. We're not equipped with the authority of a city to acquire a temporary construction easement. The city is. So the development agreement set forth that the developer was to construct the roadway improvements, which we're going to do. And in order for us to do that, we have to acquire temporary construction easements.
So Joel, I, I, I don't want to speak too much for staff because they, they can do a better job. But I don't think we go, I mean, that's not the way we do it when we build our roads either, right? Like we don't, we don't say, hey, neighbor, give us this land for a temporary easement or we're going to condemn it, right? You know, we try to go about it, I think, very strategically. And I think, I think that's what you're hearing up here is maybe go back, talk to those neighbors. Like, like I said, it doesn't need to be, here's a check, right? Maybe there's something else that they're looking to do, like they want some raised flower beds or something in that area. You're already going to be tearing through there. So that, that seems like a win-win, right? They get something better, they get an improvement. It's very minimal cost to you because you've already got all that equipment out there. You're already doing a lot of that work. So, you know, that's kind of that win-win situation.
It's a good suggestion.
So let me see if I can summarize where we are. We're suggesting the developer do a little bit more work on it, maybe sweeten the pot for the, the folks that haven't signed on yet. And then did I hear you prefer that the city wait on sending a letter?
Yeah, let's, let's have the developer make some more efforts, communicate that to our staff so that staff knows that they've made those efforts. And if, if we've hit a true roadblock where we just don't think there's going to be any additional movement, then we can have staff write a letter. That's how I feel.
I agree.
And one thing for the council and Joel, you tell me I'm wrong on this or Amanda, is if the four paws pieces does come to fruition for you in the next couple of weeks, that is the one easement you need to do that first phase.
That's correct.
And you're not anticipating to build the north phase until next spring now.
That's correct. Due to, I mean.
Right. And so, so what I'm, I just want to make sure the council's aware is there's time. I mean, time, man. Um, and so those two easements wouldn't be needed until you're building that north phase.
That's correct.
So I think that's important information for the council to be aware. Am I, am I correcting that, Amanda? So that's just important knowledge for the council to have.
All the more reason for us to knock this in a letter right now.
But, but that will delay the occupancy, if I'm not wrong, right, Joel? Just because you construct the road north-south and have the constructions done, the east-west project has to be completely completed right now under the agreement.
Substantially completed to a point.
So this will delay, not having stage two ready in a roll and on a timely basis does delay opening and operation.
Well, that's, that's assuming that they can't get the, the neighbors situated between now and when they start or when they want to start.
Agree. I just want to make sure that it's, just because they opened the north-south, doesn't mean they're allowed to operate.
All, all the more reason why there should be, should be some urgency on their part, right? So.
The onus, the onus is on the developer.
Right.
But they don't hold any power. The property owners do. So I can see where we at least need to keep an open mind and.
I think we do. I think we're just saying they should have more effort.
We aren't just saying that the property, adjacent property owners should hold all the cards.
I don't think it's fair to say corporations don't hold any power.
But the residents should hold the power of their property and perhaps didn't know in that council meeting that they had this power until you came to them and said, we can't do it. And then the light bulb came on and said, ah, all right, I'll get my pound of flesh now because I got rolled over at the council. And now I got a chance to back things up. Good for the resident, right? Now we got to figure out how to move forward with the, the company coming in and figuring out what the win is for Reiner, what he and she want. And that's the game of development, right? And so I think they, you might, if, I think those are the folks that if you sit at a kitchen table with them, Joel, you would be very reasonable to them and get an understanding, but you're not going to do it to the Reiners. I know the Reiners, you're not going to do it with a phone call from a guy in North Dakota. It's not going to happen.
Okay.
Your honor, I did just want to add two legal points, if I may. One, one, this is a unique situation with this developer. I think Matt, I want to emphasize, or I guess what Matt said, this is unique. We usually are the ones building the road. Okay? So just keep that in mind. And I understand where you're coming from, like legally, that this is a unique onus already on them.
That they agreed to and signed a development agreement.
The second legal point is you have the ability, I don't want it to be misconstrued, that you wouldn't have the ability to utilize, right? Back to my point, it's just could be, they do have a pathway if they want to utilize condemnation. You can, I'm not saying you can't legally. I'm just saying you have to decide if you want to, right? So legally, this is different. Legally, you do have a pathway forward.
It's a tough one, right? So in 14 years or whatever I've been here, I've never done a condemnation or an eminent domain. And I'm pretty sure my first one's not going to be for a car wash, right? I mean.
We have.
Yeah. Well, okay. Wow, that's a little different.
It's the same.
That's.
Amanda, were you about to say something?
I know, I just thought I might have a question I could answer, but it resolved.
All right. Anything else for me? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you all. So what we're asking?
I'll move approval of the construction drawings.
Thank you. Motion second approved construction drawing. Further discussion, seeing none with the council, please vote. And will the clerk please post that vote? That passes by a vote of five to zero.
A moved resolution accepting the storm sewer system maintenance agreements.
Second. Motion of second on part B, further discussion, seeing none with the council, please vote. And will the clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of five to zero. Now we'll talk about Lanaien Park. Richard.
All right. I'm ready for this.
Yep.
Hello. Please be here tonight to do the next check-in with the council on the Lanaien Park and the progress we're making on design and how that'll look out there. So tonight we have Jay Blue with the design team on virtually. So he'll kind of run us through some of the things that we've learned through, A, the, the public event we did over with the school over at the Harbach Center, as well as an online survey we did. And then we'll focus a little bit on what that told us. And then kind of how that is going to start to impact the design of the shelter restroom building, the playground and the spray ground. And then he'll give a little bit overall kind of update on what the, the concept's looking like. And then we'll close it out with a budget timeline and a little bit of discussion on construction. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jay.
Jay, you should have the ability to unmute and turn your video on.
Yep. Can you see me? Okay. Can you hear me? Okay?
Yep.
Yep.
Perfect. Thanks, everyone, for having me back. It's a pleasure to be back with you tonight. As Richard said, we've been, uh, busy doing some work on the Lanaien project and we've had some great experiences with the community. On, uh, August 9th, we had an in-person open house and that was fantastically attended. In fact, I, I, you all got really small on my screen, but I, I saw you before and that many of you were there. And thanks so much for being there that night. It was just a fantastic night where we paired, um, input on Lanaien Park with, uh, back to school night. And I don't, we didn't keep track of how many people came through, but based on the number of dots we got, um, it was easily, uh, 200 people that came through. And we got some fantastic feedback on boards. We had boards there. Uh, residents, uh, were given the opportunity to place dots on the items that they liked most. We tested with them some ideas about playgrounds and splash play and the buildings. And the city graciously had, uh, interpreters there to help us with, uh, my, my Spanish is absolutely rudimentary. And so, um, it was very gracious of them to have some great interpreters there. And it was really exciting to have people plugged in at that, at that event in person. The day we held that event, we also launched an online survey and we had almost 200 respondents to that online survey as well. So Richard, you could go ahead to the next slide. I'm not going to take you through all of the information we got from everyone. Um, I will say that, uh, this is available. So if anybody would like to see this information, it is available. There's nothing to hide here. I'm just going to summarize it real quickly. We, on the online survey, we had a few questions that I would describe as maybe demographic types of questions you can see here about, uh, what, you know, how do you spend your time at Lanaien Park? What do you do most often at Lanaien Park? Uh, playground emerged really strongly. That's consistent with all the anecdotes we've. Playground emerged really strongly. That's consistent with all the anecdotes we've heard about Lanan Park. You can go to the next slide, Richard. And then we had a series of questions on the boards and online where we asked people to weigh in on the types of. Play experiences, slides, swings, climbers, towers that they most desired. And we did the same thing with Splash, types of experiences, and then. Tried to get them to weigh in on what we would have called play character. Although what I would tell you happened is that most people responded really still to the design, the play experiences. And so what we heard. When we amalgamated that data was that overwhelmingly slides need to be part of Lanan Park. And some kind of interesting tower structure needs to be part of Lanan Park from a from a play perspective. Go ahead to the next slide.
Real quick, let's go back real quick. I just wondered on that slide, I saw the slides were. Were by far number one, but then towers as 22%. Why the discrepancy on those numbers?
What you're seeing is the slides emerged as on online is the most popular. And together, when you put them together, towers emerged as the most popular. The right is is.
The add in person and online survey together.
Okay, yep. So you'll, sorry for the confusion. You'll see the same thing here then. So nature made emerged as as a preference online, but when we combined all of it together. You see that this idea of a great escape. As a as a play experience emerged as the as a preference. And you can go to the. Splash versions. We did the same kind of thing with Splash. Asked them about. Discoveries and the discovery play is the kind of splash play where you might be using. Things like water tables or where you might be having opportunities to manipulate the flow of water or play with. How the water is moving across a space and there's different kinds of manufactured pieces that'll let you. Change the the way that water is moving across the surface. And then ground spray as a combination of all of them emerged as a preference in terms of. Not so much, just really stuff that's coming out of the ground, low squirters, sprayers. Not necessarily blasting you with content. You can go to the next one, Richard. And then we, again, we asked them kind of about the the interest. In in how we theme the water play and overwhelmingly online and in person. Somehow theming it and attaching it to the river was overwhelmingly expressed as the desire among the community, which is great because. That plays right into the whole brand of of the green belt and everything that the community has done to work. Towards that green belt process. So. We're taking this information and we're working with playground manufacturers and splash play manufacturers to develop. And refine the concept so that we can come back to your community and we'll talk about that in a bit. And make sure that we we can test with them and say, did we hear you properly? Are we capturing what you would like to see out here? Is this is the is the vision we have consistent with the vision you have for the types of of experiences that you'd like to have at Lanan Park? So if we go to the next slide. Oh, I'm sorry. I almost over spoke over this. We also forgot to talk about this. We also brought three different concepts for a new park shelter design. And this shelter in the middle was the was the preferred shelter. You can see by about 95%. 95 votes here relative to 76 or 66. You can go to the next slide. And then it also emerged online as the preferred shelter as well. So I'm going to show that shelter to you in a minute here without any stickers on it. You can see it in a bit more detail. I do want to emphasize that that shelter represents a concept idea. And it's a starting point for the architects to begin to iterate. On how to develop that idea into the what what the shelter will really look like. I don't want anyone to think. That's what the shelter is going to look like. It's probably going to look a little bit different, but it's going to be based on that idea. You can go to the next slide, Richard. Okay, so how did all this information change the way we're approaching our design? Well, we heard overwhelmingly first, we need to make sure that we're focusing on the core portion of the park. I'm going to highlight that for you in a minute, but basically the core portion. Is as we've designed at the center of Lanan Park, which includes the new park shelter, the splash play area and the playground space. And then above that and below that, you've got flexible recreational space, whether that be court play or open lawn space. That the play area needs to include a slot, a tower, and that tower's got to have slides. The the third, I didn't spend time looking at it, but the third most popular type of play event was different kinds of. Swinging experiences, not necessarily classic swings, but swinging experiences and lots of different varieties, whether those be basket swings or. Tarzan swings. There were lots of different options we gave them, but. If you amalgamate the information, it was towers, slides, swings. And then water play needed to include some kind of big overhead water. I didn't spend a lot of time talking about that, but. A lot of folks indicated they liked the the bucket that tips, so it might collect water, collect water, collect water. And then it rolls over and it dumps a volume of water down. Or some kind of direct overhead spray that's producing a lot of volume of water that's coming down on a person, a player. The ground level play, especially as it relates to a river and then manipulation, as I talked about before, this idea of being able to discover. And manipulate water in the play experience. And then lastly, what we heard overwhelmingly was this need for flexible open spaces. That's important for the pickup games that we've talked about before, whether that be Takraw or Badminton or pickup soccer or anything like that. But also the picnicking and group gathering functions, which is all absolutely consistent with the anecdotes we've talked about. And other conversations we've had with you all. So that. The in items, items for I think is it's very consistent with stuff we've talked about. It was great to have the community just. Again, validate that and say this is important to us and and we're honoring that in the in the concept. You can go to the next slide. Here we go. Okay, so here's our updated concept. Basically, what you end up with is that core space in the middle. Where the open air shelters labeled there on the left-hand side. We'll see this in a minute, but the left-hand side of that is bathrooms. The right-hand side of that is an open air shelter. You can kind of see. Looks like pews there, but it's actually picnic tables lined up underneath that open air shelter. Court play at the north end of the park, you got basketball and foots all there. Right below that, you've got splash play, which is going to include some in-ground splash. Play experiences and some above-ground splash play experiences. Then you've got your traditional playground space. We absolutely are looking at towers. In fact, we've. In the last two weeks, we've gone through and looked at about nine different towers. You're going to see a tower example here in a minute. It's just one of the tower pieces we're exploring with some manufacturers right now. And then below that, you've got a great lawn space. All around the core space and maybe I'll ask Richard to maybe drive with his mouse here for just a second and point out, but there's flexible lawn. Deliberate flexible lawn space. There you go. At the great lawn to the right of the play space. And then right above the the splash pad, there's another sort of flexible lawn space. So we've really tried to make sure that there's the, yeah, and there on the just south of the open air shelter as well. We've really tried to make sure that there's this umbrella of flexible space that wraps this core area. To enable play to spill out and come in and and move back and forth and parents and guardians to have a lot of flexibility. With being able to bring children to the site and and of all ages, the younger and older children of all. All age demographics. Next slide, please. All right. So as I mentioned, this this diagram kind of just reiterates what I just said there. You've got the core space in the center. Wrapping that core space, we've really tried to wrap it with flexible open space that could. Be used for sock pickup soccer or frisbee or badminton or Takraw or picnicking or just family gathering. There's a little bit of a, we're working now through a modification to make sure that that some of that flexible space immediately north of the Harbach Center. Excuse me, one moment. Yeah, come back in just a minute and start your vacuuming. Thank you. That flexible lawn space just above Harbach Center is accessible from Harbach. So as you come out the the rec bay, that there's a more direct process to get to that flex space. That's something we worked through this week. And obviously you can see some basketball and court space there at the north end, just south of Alice. Next slide. And the other thing that we're working through with our our splash play consultant is our splash play manufacturer is that trying to identify where we want that. Traditional above groundwater play to take place and where that ground spa play spray space is going to take place. The real intention here is that the space south of the new building, we want to be able to function. As a plaza space independent, independent of that north play area so that if in a. In an evening type event, we can shut off and zone off that water. In that space and that whole plaza space underneath the lawn, I'm sorry, underneath the. The open park shelter flexes as one big plaza space. Yep, right across like that. Thank you, Richard. Perfect. Thank you. Yep. And that allows us then when the future. Festival street goes in on the west-hand side and as future development starts to develop and as we make connections to the west. It really helps us to extend the experience or the fingers of Lanan Park. Out to the west and 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 extend that plaza experience with future festival activities on the festival street, for example. Next slide, please. Okay, so here's some of the pieces that we're looking at with those. That splash consultant or splash manufacturer, you can see there's a variety of different ground sprayers here. Many of these can be lit. There's, I'm learning a whole lot. About some of the newest technology relative to lighting and water. It's it's all just in the last five years changed so much. So. So a lot of new really cool things that are coming online that. Make this really exciting in terms of the ability to to time the water or or orchestrate the water and the lighting together. On the right-hand side, you can kind of see two examples of that volume. Of spray, either direct spray coming down. You can see the young lady running through that. That was a very popular piece with the. The community online and in person. And then, as I mentioned, below that is one of those big. Bucket dumping systems there as a as a play piece. Lower left-hand corner is is more of one of those discovery play water manipulation tables where you can have. Lots of different experiences about how to manipulate the water, move the water. And of course, get wet at the same time. I mean, that's the big, the number one thing to do is to get wet there in a splash play. Next slide. All right. So as we look at the playground space, we've started to think about. Having the younger play area more central to. To to the core area. Part of that is so that. Parents can easily move back and forth to the new park shelter space, which is going to have bathrooms in it. We'll see that in a minute. So. I I remember what it was like when my kids were little and. Especially when it was when I was running a zone defense and not able to do man-to-man because, you know, my wife was at another event or something like that. That proximity to be able with younger kids to be able to move easily, efficiently, effectively back and forth to a bathroom and then back to the plate becomes really important. And then the tower structure and some of the older play more to the east side. As as we're starting to explore it and you can go to the next picture here. This is going to show. Just some examples of some of the tower pieces we've been looking at. These are just three of the nine pieces we've been looking at. I'm not going to tell you, I think we've got a lot of work here to figure out which is going to be the right kind of piece. And I just saw today two brand-new tower pieces that are. Just as exciting as these in different ways. They're all unique. They're all special and there's lots of things going on here, but. The takeaway that we've been we've been working through with the manufacturers, I said before, is big tower. Big slide, multiple play experiences on that tower. And really thinking about these ideas of the great escape or or nature made and how those how those might work together. Go to the next slide. Okay, so let me, I'm going to pause right there before I get to the open air shelter and just see. Are there any questions about splash or play or anything that I just shared so far before I get? Too far out over my skis?
Susan does.
I do. These are very exciting things. On the splash pad. I'd just like you to. Look into. An option that not only has the lighting and movement, but music. And what can be done is you have different. Music choices and kids get to choose it and the music and lights go along with whatever's playing. And that's a lot of fun to. Watch. I've seen that at Washington Park in Cincinnati. What I'm not seeing from this is what kind of seating options there are. And especially for the splash pad, that can be really fun for people to just sit and watch that when you have that music and light thing going on. So I'll be interested going along here. To know what kind of thoughts there are, not just for the parents who bring their their kids, but for others who just want to come enjoy the park.
Yeah, well, that's a great question, Susan. One of the things that we worked through in a refinement. The last two days, so you're not seeing in a slideshow here, but. You can, maybe I'll ask Richard to mouse this with his 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 mouse here, but between the splash play in the. Playground, you can see there's a path that runs right between those two. And one of the things we've been exploring is how to give that path space there a bit more breadth. So that we can have trees down that center space and actually a variety of seating experiences. So parents can. Perch between the two different play experiences. And even if you're not a parent, even if you're just there to watch, you can kind of. Experience the animation at the park.
Great. Thank you.
You bet.
Anyone else to pick Michael's?
Yeah, I I do. I really like the changes. You keep saying that in the. Combination with the river feature. I'm hoping that's not the previous river feature that went through the whole park. But, okay, but. I also interested in the seating and maybe another shelter or something, kind of where that cursor is right now. If that is a, yeah, if that, is that a shelter?
Yeah, right here. Okay. And then off to the right.
Which makes a lot of sense for that children's play area, you know, for to 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 keep your eye on them and also onto the soccer. And such. Has your team looked at the features of Grimes? And man, Windsor Heights just put a heck of a system in. I don't know what's all there. I haven't driven down there, but driving by the interstate, it's massive. New new infrastructure in their park. Colby, yeah, that whole Colby.
Dual towers.
Dual towers and water, yeah. And I only say that is because maybe we tweak ours and it already is with that plaza and everything. Tweak it a little so it's a little different than the rest, right? Kind of like the aquatic centers are. All kind of feature their own thing, but. That plaza is a pretty cool idea as well, as long as you add the music that Susan says that that'd be a great idea. So.
Colby Park added. Instruments. For the kids to play right next to the.
Just up just Susan. Now what do we need? Now Susan says pianos and the whole works. Yeah, so, yeah, I I like it. We're moving in the right direction. Maybe a couple tweaks on the play. On the playground or the the water feature, just so we're not too close to everyone else, but.
The Kobe Park, Kobe Park Towers were modeled after Triumph Park. In Waukeze.
Okay. Yeah, and Waukeze just built a massive facility as well, but. I see these these sidewalks going into nowhere on the right-hand side of the screen. Have we arranged that those will go into somewhere or are they still going to nowhere? On the far right side you're talking about? Yeah. Yeah, there's some modification to those sidewalks in the in the newest plan. There's still an intention to have a strong connection to. That the community at Glacier and to make sure that there's an opportunity to. There will be a future, it's not shown here, but. The intent is that there will be a future north-south connection. As we make that green belt bike extension, that's going to ideally connect through here as well. So that. It's part of. Part of what those are set up for, but I'll be honest, some of those. Have been tweaked in the last two days to partly because we felt like there was too many connections to the east there as well, so. There's sidewalks, not Kuboto Drive streets, right? There's sidewalks. Too early for that? Yeah.
All right, ready to move on? All right, go for it, Jay.
Okay. All right, so here's the an example of that new park shelter. This was just a concept that Ask Studio put together for us. Excuse me. And this was the overwhelmingly preferred. Concept that that they developed. They had three concepts they put together. I didn't bring the other two concepts. I just brought their preferred that the concept the community preferred. You can see that on the right-hand side of the structure and you're seeing that in in the top perspective, you're looking into the right-hand side of that open air portion. Of the of the this concept and you can see. On in the plan view and in the perspective drawing lots of picnic tables. This was really important. This was something that community expressed was. Was really significant to them about being able to have big community gatherings here. In addition to that, at the west end or the left end of that open air shelter, you can see one of the things that Ask has. Conceptually started to think about is, is there a serving counter that would have power on it? So you could have coffee, you know, coffee systems and. coffee, you know, coffee systems and and crock pots and things like that, or you can set out the birthday cake there and that kind of stuff, but creating a counter space so that when you are having a large event and lots of people are there and they need to get their sandwiches or they need to get the condiments for their burgers or something like that, there's a spot where that can service that. And then you still have lots of room to be able to move around the picnic tables. And those picnic tables, as you can see, they're going to spill right out onto the plaza space into a right out right out to that splash play and playground space. The left side of the building is enclosed. The the north half of that would be three family style bathrooms. The the western most would be is the largest and would include an adult changing table there. The two smaller ones would have infant changing tables in them. They're single stall units, so they're just going to have a toilet and a sink, mirror, hand hand drying system, and then the 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 changing stations in there. And then below that would be the pumping facilities for the splash play area. So you can see the way that this current concept right now operates is the door access would be on the north side. The pump facility access would be on the west side. But I want to caution everyone here that really the takeaway that we heard from the community, and this is the direction we've given Ask, and I'll be on a call with Ask tomorrow as part of a workshop. The community really responded favorably to that gabled roof line. The openness and the height of that gabled roof line. And I think they were responding to the color there of that. It it appears like it's it looks like wood. I don't know that Ask had that in mind necessarily, but you can just by the coloring, I think they were reading that as wood. So I think it was the traditional form combination plus that openness, plus the sense of perhaps natural materiality. And those are some of the pieces that I'd like Ask to continue to explore. But again, I wanted everyone to understand the final building is probably not going to look exactly like this, what you're seeing right here. So just I want people to understand that. Any questions on the building?
Yeah, Jay, real quick, on the the pump and the washrooms, is is the pump needing to be located there because of the the splash pad? Like, you know, vicinity requirements? Because I'm I'm just thinking of something you said, actually, with like the zone versus man to man, you know, with with kids, right? If you've got a couple of kids playing, one wants to go to the bathroom, one wants to keep playing. That north side washroom, it's a little bit isolated, and so it's hard to keep an eye on the other kid.
It it can flip all the way over. It could totally mirror that whole system could mirror. So we're close enough. It needs to be proximate to that pump. It needs to be proximate to the splash plate to be able to pump water to the splash plate and effectively control that system. But you could take that whole system and flip it, mirror it, top to bottom. Or honestly, Ask was looking at some systems where maybe the pump is all pump facility is all the way over on the far west side and you end up with two two bathrooms on the north side and one bathroom on the south side kind of a thing. So there's I think there's a variety there in terms of how that all shakes out is a long way of answering your question.
Part of part of why we had asked at least the design group to put the restrooms on the north side of the building was that if we wanted to have activities and events on the south side in that plaza area there, you wouldn't have people coming in and out of the restrooms and having activities there. So that's part of why we at least initially had asked that to be the restrooms be on the north side of the.
Yeah, no, and I get that, right? Like, and and you know, if it's me as an adult, I'd like it on the north side, a little more isolated. I don't have to worry about somebody, you know, whatever. But I think with little kids, yeah, especially if you've got multiple kids playing and one, you know, they're gonna start throwing tantrums. They gotta leave and big sister, big brother, little sister, little brother needs to go to the bathroom. And so I'm just thinking, just practically speaking, right? If if we've got a bathroom option where a parent could stand outside one of them and still see their kids playing.
Yeah. Another thought that we had too with with that.
Grandparents too.
We had with trying to keep that south wall kind of solid is we've toyed around with the idea of that being kind of a community bulletin board too that faces the plaza space like the main walk area space. So if we're having we're going to have a meeting out there, we have materials, you know, and we've been having some conversations with the school district about having some joint communications for the neighborhood that we would potentially use that south wall for maybe a combination of bulletin board, public art. Was something that we've also kicked around while we.
Could you kind of do both where where the the pump, instead of going from west to east, you go from north to south. You put a couple of bathrooms on the north side and maybe one or two on the south side. And and you still have a fairly good sized wall that you could use for that. And so you accomplish both.
Yeah, potentially.
One question about the roof line, the break. You know, it does occasionally rain. Folks are caught in the shelter. What's the rationale for not continuing it? So if you're at a picnic table and you want to get to the restroom, you don't have to cross into the rain.
Yeah, good question. What they were trying to respond to was it maybe Richard, if you pan back to one of the plan view drawings. There you go. They were responding to the geometry of the site plan. So they were trying to emphasize this notion that that path comes all the way through the building and that I I think they really liked the idea of the path coming through the building it, but I think they were just playing with this idea of the roof line. So I'm not sure. Again, I wouldn't the the takeaway is from the community where the peaked, the gabled roof, the openness, and I think the natural materiality. And I would I would expect you're going to see some variety in in what happens with the building.
Is there an example of those small shelters that we could see? Because to me those matter. If you've seen the usage of that park, you know, you you often have five to eight groups, right? Now lately on Friday nights and Saturday nights, been one group that will take over that entire blue. And the parking is crazy. There's fifty eighty cars out there. So those other shelters are gonna matter. Because, you know, you put ten people in that blue one. Nobody else is going to join. Right? I mean, really, in theory, and and yet you have seating for fifty, which I love it. But what's the seating for the others and the look of those other two, I think, are going to be as if not more important than the big one?
That's a great question. One of the things we'll be talking about in our call tomorrow, it's actually on the agenda is to talk about right sizing the size of that open space on the on the current shelter design and thinking about whether one or both of these other shelters needs to potentially get a bit bigger. So you could have two moderately sized groups there. That's one discussion for us to talk through. The other thing is those those two shelters are going to be cousins of that bigger shelter. Now, I don't know exactly what they're going to look like. So those rectangles that I'm showing there are just placeholders. But the idea is that all of the all of the architecture that will happen here is custom architecture for the park and they're all going to be in the same vein. It's not going to be a catalog piece. You're not going to have one custom structure and a catalog piece. The idea is that they're all architecturally related pieces.
Okay, thank you.
And are there are there benches in other areas? They're just they're just not shown on the diagram? Because I think Susan brought up a really good point about having seating around and there's not a whole lot that you can see on the diagrams. I don't know if you're planning on other benches.
Yeah, there'll be there'll be seating areas throughout the park at this at this point in the design process. We just haven't identified that. It's more trying to get these bigger elements locked in, the look, the feel and the design of them. And then we can start to fill in that other stuff as we get that locked in.
Fair enough. Thank you.
You know, Richard, we talked about those benches too. That could be an opportunity to involve the community on that for specialized for a loved one or someone else.
Absolutely.
You can go ahead, Richard. Okay, so if you recall, the last time I was with you, we talked about the budget being at five million. We're still at a five million dollar budget. You can see the general breakdown here of how we get to five million and there's you know, like in general requirements and and furnishing some stuff, there's a few other items that are rolled in there, but it's this is this is the budget that we're working with right now. So five million. We're not changing the budget. We're not we're not increasing the budget, but you can kind of see where that money is being allocated right now. And then from a scheduling standpoint, I mentioned this earlier, on October twenty ninth, we're going to have another public meeting where we come in and we're going to confirm our design with the public. Richard and I are working on what that's going to look like and how we're going to do that. I'm really excited to bring the design back to the community and have them come through and say, wow, this you got it right, or you got it mostly right, but here's what I want you to fix it. And and that's perfect when we get that kind of information because you know, the trade secret of design is we're not mind readers here. We do our best. And so having that having an engaged community participate and be part of that process and and tell us what we're doing right and where we need to make changes makes the design that much better. This is going to be paired with I'm gonna get it wrong. So help me again. What is it? What is it called on October twenty ninth then, Clive?
It's October thirtieth. It's beggars night.
Beggars night. Okay, so this is this is deliberately before beggars night. And the idea is that sort of pair that is is part of the process of getting getting families ready for when beggars night happens. They have this October twenty ninth event. Then end of October, our team is submitting initial construction drawings to the city staff and public works for their review. We're still on target for trying to hit early December draft final construction drawings to the city. Our goal is to have content back to planning and to you early February. By mid February, we finalized those construction documents that it's we've met all of the expectations and comments that we have. And you're really targeting a bid let in end of February with a bid opening about four weeks later with the expectation that you're able to then award that bid either mid March to end of April, depending on the the process that we need to go through. If that happens, then I would expect that your contractor is breaking around Mayish on Lanin.
And how long are we expecting for construction?
It's probably going to be twelve months.
That's what I would say. Ten, 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 ten at a minimum, probably twelve.
You know, one of the things we got to consider. So if we get going in probably first part of May, we want to try to get as much done during the construction season next year, but we have to probably realize that there'll be wrap up. They'll have to be done in the following spring.
And I know you guys have thought about this, but what's the plan for alternate options for the residents in that area during that time?
We've been, yeah, we've been talking through that. We talked a little bit about with the school district in terms of the load that they'll see up at Crestview and some things that we could do there. And also we'll be coming back to you here shortly with a a plan on the temporary park space. It's a little further away. So I mean, it's not. We think Crestview will be probably where you'll see more dominant use. And then we'll still have Harbach Center open. So even though it's not a traditional park space, we know that the activity will pick up there as well. So we're going to try to make, you know, make good with those spaces and have that. Our hope is to have that temporary park space open with some soccer, you know, soccer goals. I mean, I don't want to preclude what you're going to see from the McClure team on that, but it's going to be some open space type concepts to have some areas for that. And then we know the school property will get some of it as well. So one thing I wanted to to mention too is Richard and I have been talking quite a bit about the schedule and thinking about project delivery. So here recently with Greenbelt Landing across the street, which the the bids that you just approved, it was roughly about six and a half, a little over six and a half million. Of course, there's more millions to that project with the playground and other things that have been donated and we'll have public art coming as well. And that the we chose to have a construction manager associated with that project. Last week, Richard and I had a conversation with Angie Fonkoo's owners rep that's worked for us in the past. And just asking, we we kind of gave her the outline of the project and said, okay, if we're thinking about project delivery, whether you do the traditional bid build or our design bid build project for a park of this scale, you know, that's upwards of five million dollars and has the complexities of a splash pad and some other elements. You know, is this something we should be considering, whether it's just a general contractor where you bid that out and the G C has the one main contract and then you kind of see what subs you get with that kind of traditional process? Or should we be considering what we've been doing the last couple of projects, a construction manager approach where we can control do an RFP for a construction manager? They we control that and they work for us and then do kind of bidding out the prime bid packages. So we wanted to get kind of her opinion on it and she shared some perspectives that with the bidding environment being she's anticipating it to be very competitive in the springtime and late winter springtime of next year that we might want to be careful with the G C process because there might be a lot of contractors that are typically G Cs for a project like this that are trying to bid on low bid work like this. And we might not get the not get the the greatest contractors to work with potentially. Again, this is all estimates. So as Richard and I have been talking about it and understanding of, you know, what how many park projects we have going on with obviously Greenbelt Landing happening at the same time across the street that we would like to entertain, at least going through an RFP process for our construction manager, seeing, you know, what's out there in terms of rates. You know, roughly, you're going to pay six percent on top for a a general, a G C on top of all the subs. Can we get the same, you know, in terms of through a construction manager and then at least have control of that? And then they're packaging together the prime contracts. You know, whether it's, you know, the playground piece or what's the best way to structure since we have the shelter components, the splash components, playground components? What's the best way to set up those prime contracts? Similar to what we did across the street with Greenbelt Landing because of its unique elements. We'd like to pursue that at a staff level because we've seen that be fairly effective for us and kind of add to our staff capacity and also helps us control that general contractor a little bit versus kind of leaving that to completely to the low bid scenario where you're going to be, you know, there we'll have to take the low bid of a general contractor and then all the subs that come with that general contractor that we have little control over. So again, it's not.
Not responsible or.
Correct, unless they're not. Yes, there's some elements of the law that we can utilize. So as we we were kind of getting her feedback on it, and so I think her at least caution to us is we could see a lot of G Cs in the space next spring that aren't typically G Cs for projects like this that we may be dealing with. I don't know what that means and can't guarantee it. We could get a perfectly good general contractor with perfectly good subs for the project, but knowing that we do have a heavily used park here and we want to get it done and turned around and get the park reopened. That is at least something that the staff would like to explore of seeking a similar construction manager component for we were kind of in that middle area because we asked her like, okay, it's a five million dollar project. It's like, well, if it was closer to seven, it'd be for sure. You'd want to go construction manager, but five is kind of in that gray area. At least what she sees in the market right now. And so you know, we've had some success again, doing an RFP process similar to what we did with Greenbelt Landing, doing interviews, coming back with that and then still getting the value of that construction manager as we're getting to the construction drawing development of the park where they can start to look at constructability and maybe offer some suggestions to the design team. You know, also lessening our construction administration on the design team side for when we're actually doing the park next year. So something Richard and I've talked about and we'd like, you know, the council to at least give us some room at the staff level to go pursue it, see what we see in the RFP process. If we don't like what we see, we don't have to do it. We can still go the traditional design bid build.
Are there are there projects that you were thinking might be able, you know, you were saying staff time and admin time would would kind of be a lesser burden if we go this route? Are there projects you have in mind that could?
Yeah, I was going to go along that same route. You're saying six percent. That's three hundred thousand dollars. It's a chunk of change, not that we got to get a three hundred thousand dollar return from that, but if we have staff capacity, so we're getting some additional productivity, there's a way to
quantify that.
Again, we don't have to get to three hundred right to show the value, but that that would be nice to be able to see, okay, by doing this, we'll be able to get to these other projects. There's additional productivity there that equates to this amount. And it's an offset of that three hundred thousand.
Well, yeah, what I was saying is just the apples to apples. A general contractor on a traditional design bid build is probably going to do about six percent overhead on all of the construction. So that three hundred thousand, it's either you're paying the G C the three hundred thousand or you're paying three hundred thousand to the construction manager that you hired and you control. That's the difference. That's the apples to apples. Can we get into that same number where it's not
It's not five point three at that point. It's still five. Is that what you're saying?
It would. We would still stay within the five. The whole goal is staying within the five million dollars construction budget. That doesn't change. Is that's still the goal? It's just the project delivery of how we get there. If could we find efficiencies with going to construction manager route versus general contractor, traditional design bid build is what we want to at least entertain and see what the possibilities may be and and understanding that there's some efficiencies that we have with the construction manager process. There's going to be elements that, you know, we can't control as much in the traditional design bill process.
I brought this up before, but would we be planning on having an owners rep also? Not at all.
No, I don't think so for this one because it's pretty straightforward. Park project, we would just do the construction manager route and that was similar to what we did across the street with Greenbelt Landing.
That's something I do caution about. And when I brought it up before, you said we did a good job of outlining what the scopes were. So we weren't double.
Double.
But it is working well for a number of cities to use the construction management approach. So I I think it's it's okay as long as you're careful.
Yeah, not over not double dipping on anything. Yep.
I use an example, you know, we we built a twenty eight million dollar facility and if we let the the G C run that project, that would be a thirty eight million dollar facility today and we would still probably be in the lawsuit we're in. Right?
Uh that would be a $38 million facility today and we would still probably be in the lawsuit we're in, right? Um so, you know, you get that lowest bid and he's also your Q C and your you know, so I, though I don't want to give up 300,000, you're giving it up either way, but you end up with a graphite and you're in trouble. Um as your G C and I'll say that, you know, the truth. And so uh I'm for this other model uh of trying to manage the uh any possible problems that they can manage ahead of time. So. It's unfortunate we have to do that. It's unfortunate that the legislators make us pick absolute lowest bid. Uh regardless of who the contractors are, but those are the rules. So.
Yeah, and there and even with the, there isn't any guarantees, but with the C M process, just like we saw with Greenbelt Landing. The city still has to look at lowest responsible bid for the individual prime bid packages. But again, this gives you, you know, higher, in our view, potentially higher likelihood of success in hitting project targets, project budgets, project timelines. I know I had heard that there was elements of like the Grimes splash pad that, you know, they went a traditional G C route and it was upwards of a year of certain elements that they were still chasing down to finish that project a year later. So that's what gives me pause when I'm thinking about one of our busiest parks in the city.
When you have a construction manager, they do have the capacity to self perform. And it's not necessarily a bad thing. They still have to compete. So sometimes that's a pretty decent outcome.
Right.
On parts of the.
Yeah.
Do you like a Graham or somebody that could do both like that?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just trying to figure out who that was because I don't know nothing.
Yeah.
Ryan does some of their own work.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Hanson.
And we have a, we have a list that we had from Greenbelt Landing, similar kind of C Ms that we had sent that RFP out to. In fact, Richard's really looked at, do we just simply modify the RFP we did for Greenbelt Landing, incorporate the Lanin Park elements and get that out the door here fairly quickly? Because then that'll, the sooner we can get them on board, the more value that brings to the design team too. And we start going through the constructability review and packaging the 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 bid packages, the prime contracts together.
Very good. Anything else for Richard tonight?
Thank you.
Proceed. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jay.
Thanks, Jay.
Matthew, we have books on this tonight. Thank you, Jay.
There was one correspondence in your packet.
All right. Thank you very much. I understand that someone did not make it in time for our citizens' presentation. That's the case. If you would like to approach the podium and identify yourself and uh we typically give you three minutes. So if you can be efficient.
Thank you very much. Um I missed uh my time tonight because I went through Hickman. And uh it was closed, so I had to come all the way around. So sorry, I, lady and gentlemen. Hello, Mr. Mayor, sir, and uh Mr. City Manager Matt and Mark says hi and ma'am and gentlemen of the council. My name's Barbie Miller and I'm here tonight as resident of Country Club Owners Association. And I wanted to bring forth a couple of concerns to the city regarding the CCOA um uh neighborhood. Um for those unfamiliar with CCOA, it uh is located between University on the south, Hickman on the north, 142nd Street on the west and Cedarwood Park on the east. That's our neighborhood. We have six sub-associations that consist of about 200 people. And then we have 464 homeowners, single family homeowners, um several small businesses and two banks. So that's, that's us. It just gives you kind of a snapshot of of what our community is all about. Um our entire association does have laws. We have a master declaration. We have bylaws and we have covenants and everybody in the city follows them. Okay. And our neighborhood follows them. Okay. Um we have three parks. We have two lakes. We have a fountain. We have a dam. That's a 100-year dam. Um we actually drain into Walnut Creek down to 114th Street. So we watch out for you guys. Um and uh three entrances. Okay. Now, in year 2023, um the City of Clive did a road project at Lake Point Entrance. And um it was just supposed to be concrete. It was kind of interesting because it was the last concrete that I remember the um this uh that was put in in our development because it was the latest part of our development need develop. But anyway, it was a concrete project. And to that project was added uh bio cells. Okay. No one knew really what bio cells were, so they asked. Um and in an email got information from Jonathan Seigun. Just showed a picture, you know, it was kind of an interesting picture. It was a lot of weeds with a little blue turquoise dome on it. And so the board was thinking, oh, that's a bio cell. Okay. Um and so um that's kind of where I, why I'm coming tonight. Okay. Now, the bio cells that we have in our community, okay, they're culverts. And they're about 24 inches deep. And they're about 90 feet long and we have on both sides of Lake Point Entrance. Okay. So if you can kind of imagine that and.
Three minutes. So if you could.
Yeah, okay. The bio cells are, excuse me, ugly. Um and um to make it worse, there's bricks put on the top of them and um around the edges and the bricks add to the hazard of the bio cells. They are hazardous, believe me. Um the uh Mr. Mayor, sir, did the City of Clive receive grant monies for these bio cells?
No, no.
We did not.
Did the city pay for the bio cells?
We did.
Yes.
You did out of your own, okay, out of the city. Okay. Um let's see. How many of you are sitting, how many of you sitting down today mow your lawn or have mowed your lawn? I'm just, I'm just asking for a question. Okay, great. Um I'm just trying to prove a point here. Um these bio cells um to mowers are extremely, extremely dangerous because they slope down. The other thing is grass clippings go into the bottom of these culverts and guess what? They go into our lake. Okay, um I asked the city management team member to just pull the top off one of the metal headers of the grate one day. And um underneath the grate was completely filled with dirt. Guess where that's going? Into our lake. Um we have a video of a of a um sandbar that is now developed pretty close to that area or very close to that area. And so I want to point that out. Two homers, two homeowners have moved because they didn't have this when they moved into the area and it upset them and they left, which is very sad in my opinion. Um so Mr. Mayor and Mr. City Manager. Um it is on record in an email sent from the C O CCOA board to you regarding the dangers of the hazard. And so I want to make sure that the council also knows that. I know you all all communicate, but I just want to point it out again. It is very hazardous. Um it's a lawsuit waiting to happen and um the CCOA Association is not going to take responsible responsibility for it. I just want to make that clear.
Again, you're way over time.
Okay, well, I have a little bit more to go. I won't, I won't take much time.
Again, you've got the ability to send us pictures.
No, I don't. I really don't. It's, it won't take me much. I'll just, I'll finish. Okay. Um and I do have a question, a question for a couple of people here. Okay. Um, Mr. Mayor, sir, um we received in the last newsletter. Um focusing on the bio cells. Everybody got that in Clive? Okay. And it was an exact copy of the Environmental Protection Agency website, word for word. Okay. My question to you, Mr. Mayor, sir, is Clive water safe to drink?
Yes.
Okay. Um so the purpose of the bio cells is to clean water, correct?
One of the purposes.
Okay.
Stormwater management.
Pardon?
Stormwater management.
Okay, fine. Okay, so um let's see, and you said you don't receive grant monies. Um Susan, um are you in charge of the uh that part of of water management then?
Well, I'm elected as a city council member at large, representing the whole.
Water element?
Right.
Okay.
The whole community and I do participate in water-related groups like the Walnut Creek Watershed Management Authority.
Yeah, okay.
But I'm, I'm not, I'm the president, but I'm not in charge of anything.
Okay, so you go in and out of that entrance though every day?
I do.
And you see those, you see those.
As legal counsel, I feel like we're kind of getting into a deposition about some pending concerns. Is there, is there an ask? I'm sorry, is there an ask before the council this evening? We're happy to take this under advisement. I know that there's been correspondence among the staff about this, but um I'm sorry, I'm not, you're, Mr. Mayor, I don't know that questioning back and forth to the council, it's appropriate this time? We'd invite, I guess, if there's additional sit-down meeting or some other approach, that'd be helpful.
You're welcome to email or give us a hard copy of those materials if you've got photos.
And I'd be happy to share with the council pictures of the bio cells that.
Okay, I think it would be very interesting for council members to come out and take a look at them. And you know what? I would love all the council members to just meet me and take a look at them. And we can set up a date at some point. That would be the best thing to do because then you'll have a good idea what they look like. And then in the meantime, if you don't mind, one more thing, Mr. Mayor, please. Um I just want you to look at the June 28th, uh 2024, uh United States Supreme Court uh decision, okay? And it relates to um the EPA. Okay, I just want to give you a heads up on that. Take a look at it, see what we're dealing with and and you can go from there. Take a look at it. Okay. And thank you for letting me speak.
What was it?
Okay, thank you so much.
I know the sheriff.
Report. Thank you, Your Honor. I'll be brief. Solar Quality Restoration Annual Cost Share Program for the year is completed. We have a couple of little last pieces of casework to address that come up as we do these, but once again, we had great participation. In my own neighborhood, I, when I'm walking my new dog around, I get to see about four or five of them all there in one spot. So we continue to have a lot of enthusiasm. Already over 20 on the waiting list for next year. The Dallas County three to five or the county supervisors education campaign that we discussed. We are working with our partners that have partner cities in Dallas County to get that education work done. We've completed the F A Q document and we'll be sharing that on cityofclive.com. Our contractor is finishing up the educational video and once we have that, we'll be sharing that with all the partner communities to make sure that they give it a green light. Once everybody has said, yes, we're comfortable with this, then we'll be start sharing that more broadly. Um at touch, talking with Councilman Klein and some others who have been involved with planning, we think that there would be a good intermediate opportunity in the coming weeks. So we'll continue to work on that strategy so we can get this information out to voters and they understand what they're looking at on the ballot. Trail closure at Walnut Creek. Right now, the D O T has sort of acknowledged that the single signs that they initially put up on the middle of the trail or right next to the trail weren't really getting the job done to keep people out of that space. So they've been working with us to get some more expansive barriers out there because once they start moving material around, it is going to be a dangerous space for people. And we don't want them, we don't want users, you know, workers to be held up on doing their work, their jobs. So expect to see more of a barrier going up there at 114th and at Campbell Bridge. The uh final thing I have tonight for you, Your Honor. Uh has to do with the partnership. So Councilman Klein and I have been working with the partnership as they've been drafting their state legislative priorities. We had our third and final meeting of that group this morning. They have been very receptive to a lot of the ideas that cities, especially Clive, has been bringing forward. We'll see another draft of this in the coming weeks and once we do, we'll make sure that all of you get a chance to see it and understand where we had a chance to weigh in. And help improve that language from our perspective and better connect the work that cities do with the overall, that overall economic vitality of the region.
Very good. Thanks, Pete. Any questions for Pete?
I understand from a conversation with David Stark that he and Tiffany Toshack came in for a meeting. Is there an update on that?
It was a productive meeting. Uh, you know, in the, in the whole process here, uh there has been a sort of an understanding that that document in the past maybe didn't really fully capture how cities or if we're used to football analogy, your offense and defensive mind for getting these types of projects done. A great economic activity vitality doesn't happen without the infrastructure, without the services that cities provide to those businesses and residents, but creating the neighborhoods where people want to come and live and thrive. And so the contributions, I think that we've offered this year, the proposed edits we've offered have brought more of that perspective and David and Tiffany were receptive. Mayor Matt can offer their perspective.
Yeah, I would say that we had a really good dialogue with uh with David. We went over to their office, the the system office here just over on West Lakes and had a really good conversation with them. Of course, David's a Clive resident and so knows uh uh one of our neighborhoods very, very well and and I think there's, um it gave us an opportunity to explain some of the the conversations that they're hearing around the metro area and and maybe some of the the genesis of those. And I think that once you have those one-on-one conversations, it's it's a lot more understandable where they, where they get an idea where cities are coming from in these conversations. And so I think that's a benefit. That's something that we asked, you know, Tiffany, because we knew David was the chair of the board this year as an Clive resident. So said, hey, we're, we're happy to, uh we also shared a lot of our resident, um our citizen satisfactions, the resident satisfaction survey results and kind of talked about what are the things in that upper right quadrant that we talk with you all about of things that our residents want to see and what what they want the city to be investing in and how it's safety. And, you know, parks and recrea, I mean, look at what we talked about tonight, you know, parks and rec Lanin Park, that we need to be investing in those spaces and that's where you see a lot of cities coming from because we're not too dissimilar, especially on the west side that residents are a lot of times in that same quadrant in terms of priority services. And it was, it was a very good conversation and resonated uh with him in particular as we talked through that and he he sees it every day as a, as a um resident in the Woodlands neighborhood. So.
When he brought it up at the Iowa Hospital Association Conference, just in a private conversation, I really felt like we had a good outcome from it. So.
One of the big frames that we've been providing as a way to further enhance the way that especially the 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 partnership has talked about tax environments is that, yes, taxes need to be managed aggressively because we're asking a lot of residents and businesses, whether it's property, sales, income, all of those forms of tax. However, to understand that it's just high, bad, low, good misses what we in this council has seen consistently, which is people are, want to have services, they want to see value for the taxes they pay. And so that combination of competitive tax environment that yields value for taxes paid has been a good sort of pairing. And it, I think it's really helped uh change up the, some of the ways that the partnership is thinking about presenting the tax conversation with legislature this year.
I think that conversation we had with David on that exact point carried over and to the um and I know the mayor will probably speak on this, the property tax discussion we had um prior to the regional summit last Thursday, where that was a theme that was kind of reinforced with um the Great and White Partnership. There was a few folks there from their board. David was there for that conversation as well. And then um the lobbyists that uh the partnership has hired to represent them at the State House from uh Denton Davis Brown to kind of talk about this value proposition that cities provide that are things that are maybe obvious to the the private sector or legislators and how can we tell that story better uh down at the State House together and have partners, I think to your point, Councilmember Jenkins at the last council meeting with the Bravo discussion is how do cities have partners down there and not just feel like we're standing alone sometime? And I think, I think this conversation is starting, I think this theme is starting to resonate uh with folks and we're taking it from that approach. Uh how we bring people along with us and and we're, again, we'll see what the final document looks like. Um I hate, I I don't want to get too far and say I'm optimistic, but you know, I am optimistic with what I've been hearing about those conversations and and the ones that I participated in. So hopefully we see some, uh we have some more partners uh down there in terms of the values that cities provide at this next legislative session.
Very good. Anything else?
No, Your Honor.
Three kind, anything happening with Dart or anything else?
Nothing at all.
Oh, good.
Uh no, we, we did have another, uh we had a commission meeting on Tuesday. Um and there, there was some discussion again from the the track committee, which is the Rider Advisory Committee. Um they, they provided some information that, one, they had a request that they be a little I wouldn't say involved because they already are involved, but they want to be more involved with Reimagine Dart. So I thought that was a good thing. Um they also laid out, I think I told you last time that I reported that there, there was a little bit of a disconnect between some of the, the reimagine outcomes that they were looking for versus what the commissioners voted were their three highest. Um one of the biggest ones was connectivity, right? Um so that wasn't brought up in in the top three for the commission, but it was the absolute number one for the crack committee. And the reasoning for that was um it's about getting to destinations. And so if there are route reductions or if it, if there's a increased number of transfers because of decrease.
or if, if there's a increased number of transfers because of decreased frequency of buses. Uh, there was also some discussion about fare increases, but that was a little bit tangential. But basically that issue of if there's less buses running and less routes running, it's going to take more transfers and more time to get from, you know, maybe, uh, uh, where you lived in Des Moines to a healthcare provider here in Clive or, you know, vice versa. And that's one of the things that we actually talked about with Grimes withdrawing. There with, with their announcement of their, um, uh, withdrawal, there are going to be changes to Route 93. Um, and that, that route is, I mean, it, it goes along 86 up into Urbandale and then up into Johnston, and then it used to swing left, basically go west into Grimes. That connection to Grimes will then be cut off. It'll just basically kind of to simplify U-turn in Johnston and come back down. And so that, that will have, I think it was a little bit of a surprise for the commission because we haven't had route reductions like that with other cities withdrawing in the past. They haven't had like a fixed route that goes into their, uh, communities.
But that one went to, that one went to Walmart.
Yep.
That's it.
Well.
There were no other stops. I just don't see the loss affecting the whole system.
Maybe the impact won't be as large, but I think it was a little bit of surprise for the commission to real, to, to come to the understanding of there's no more access into Grimes essentially. It's, it's not just, we don't pick up people in Grimes. It's that there's no destinations in Grimes, right? So.
Like this whole conver, no offense, the, the whole conversation sounds to me like rather than reimagining Dart, they're just nibbling around the edges of the existing Dart and just, you know, removing a, a route here or there. I mean, that's, that's going to do nothing. No, no, so reimagine Dart hasn't been done yet.
Yeah.
Oh, I, I get that.
So, so yeah, this is, this is all, the, the reimagine part is more about right now, it's more in the conceptual stage of what do we want to be the outcome, right? So that's the more value soft piece, I would say, right? The, we were actually, during this last commission meeting, we were talking about, uh, we approved the, the consultants that would then come in, take all the information and surveys that, uh, has been done so far, that conceptual surveying. And then they would come, they would come in and actually do data crunching and they would take those concepts and say, okay, based on what you're telling us and the numbers we see, here's what we recommend. And then you iterate on that essentially is what they're saying. Um, so yeah, it's not, it's not done by any means and I'm, I've made it clear, I'm not a reimagined art, but it's also, I think it's unfair to say that they're just saying kind of route here or there, that the route closure is more related to Grimes withdrawal, right?
And when is that effective then?
July 1.
Yeah, July 1 of, of 25. Yep. And then Pleasant, uh,
Pleasant Hill.
Thank you. I'm blanking on the names all of a sudden. Uh, Pleasant Hill will be, uh, July of 2026 is their withdrawal. And then, um, there was also discussion about, um, the, the, the funding and the levy rates. Angela Connolly from LePoke County Supervisor, Supervisor Board, she did, uh, you know, um, read her letter. And it got a little contentious for a little bit. Uh, there was some back and forth about, you know, whether or not Des Moines has done its part. Um, and without rehashing some of what was said, I, I think there's definitely a disconnect as to the prioritization or, or maybe, you know, where does Des Moines see this overall and its funding? You know, challenges, uh, compared to what are the western suburbs looking for, right? We, we're looking, and I'm, I'm generalizing here a little bit, but in the letter that was sent, um, we're looking to make sure that Des Moines is going to honor the commitment it's already made, right? The only thing that we got, Connie, Connie's response was they're working on a number of priorities. They'll get a letter back to us. Didn't really give a timeframe. And yeah, that, that's about the extent of what she told us in the meeting. Angela's remarks were around, you know, hey, Dart is important, which I don't think anybody disagrees on in that, in that commission. But her ask was, let's, let's pause the, the discussion about withdrawing on that December 1 date and continue to work on reimagine Dart before we start talking about withdrawal. There were a number of us in the western suburbs that said they don't agree with that. I was one of them. I, I told her I, I, I agreed with my, almost everything the letter said. The issue that I took was with that, asking us to pause. Um, I think we need to work in parallel in that. If we're not coming to a resolution on the funding, reimagine Dart is going to be very short-lived. I mean, if, if we don't have a funding strategy forward, it doesn't matter how well it's reimagined, right? Um, so I, I think that's where we kind of left it. Um, there was a comment about maximum levies as well. Des Moines made the comment about it's already paying the maximum levy. And this is all kind of the implication being that they're already being asked to do more. There's a comment that Windsor Heights and West Des Moines are already, well, Windsor Heights is already at its maximum levy as well and Windsor, uh, West Des Moines will be next year as well. So that comment was pointed out as well. Um, and then I did talk to.
What's the point of bringing that up for them to say, Des Moines is at it? West Des Moines is going to be at Windsor Heights is at it. So what? Everybody else should just race to it?
No, no. So Windsor Heights and West Des Moines was, we're, we're kind of pushing back on Des Moines' assertion. Des Moines kind of made the implication of we're already at the maximum levy. That's all we should really, I mean, she, that's not exactly what she said, but that's what she was kind of implying, I think, is we're already paying a fair share. We're at the maximum levy. And that's when.
I think that's a decent argument by Des Moines, right? I, I, I'd agree with her. But then cut the service in half in Des Moines and then the money will right-size itself for the agency, right?
Well, I mean, there's some, there's some issues with that. I mean, it's, one, if, if there are service cuts, the most obvious biggest money savers would be the ones going into the suburbs, right? Because they're longer routes. They take more time, you know, there's less ridership. There is that aspect of it, you know, if, if you're cutting, like cutting the D-line that, that we are, we're doing that route reduction now. That's not a ton of, I mean, it's going to save some money, but it's not a ton of money that's being saved there. And so that's kind of the concern is, you know, you start talking about, okay, let's just cut the services in half. Well, a lot of these, a lot of our communities are the ones that are going to lose service.
Yeah. Well, and I'm not suggesting, I'm just saying there is a way to right-size the losses of Dart if it has to be done, right? And if, if the money won't come in from Des Moines or other where, wherever.
Right.
You have to do something. You can't, and I know you, you, you agree with that. It's, we've talked about it, but you can't continue to run a bogus books in hopes that somebody's going to take care of it later.
Part of the issue is the service that costs the most is, is paratransit and those sort of services. Those are ones that we want to try to maintain for as long as possible, right? Like those are the ones we don't want to cut. So again, it comes down to how much do we have to cut to keep, you know, we might end up with all we have left is paratransit, right? And one of the thing I did want to, Amanda did talk to me a little bit about the, you know, what happens, worst case scenario, a majority or all of the western suburbs provide that letter on December 1st. And I know we talked about that the last meeting, you know, we could send it and then always withdraw it. So Amanda did want to share with me and I want to share with you, you know, um, she did, she did agree that withdrawals can be rescinded, but it does have some knock on effect, effects immediately. So first thing is it creates confusion to staff and riders because they have to announce those withdrawals when they, when they, when they come in. And so a lot of riders and the public, they don't understand the withdrawal process. And so they might start thinking, oh, I can't, I can't get to where I need to go tomorrow, not 18 months from now. There's also, and this one, this one did, uh, you know, so I, I was, I, I wasn't aware of this one. So Dart is the region's only FTA certified recipient for, for FTA funding. So even if there was a private service that wanted to get federal money or like paratransit services or, or some other sort of mobility's, you know, microtransit or whatever. If they wanted to get those federal funds, they have to go through an FTA, or I shouldn't say federal, if they want to get FTA funds, they have to go through an FTA certified organization. And so that would, that would, right now, that's only Dart. Um, so either, you know, if Dart were to dissolve in some way, then there would need to either be, uh, a new entity that takes on that mantle of getting the certification, which is not easy from the sounds of it. Uh, or you'd be foregoing those other organizations wouldn't have access to those FTA funds, which is right now, which is why Dart partners with some of those private entities so they can get the money through the FTA and then use it with those private back programs. And then uh, there's, there's, there was also another comment about, um, a lot, you know, people in our region, they don't travel in just one community, right? It's, it's not, I only live, work and play in Des Moines, right? So a lot of it is, and, and we are, we're a spread out community, right? And we are kind of car mandated or transport mandated. You can't walk to a lot of places very easily. And so there's that aspect of, you've got folks that live in Clive or live in Milwaukee and go to school in Des Moines or, or vice versa. And, you know, healthcare, doctor, doctor's appointments, childcare, all of that happens in some way, shape or form through bus system.
For those 21 riders.
Well, and, and that's, and, and that is something, you know, paratransit, we have the numbers or, or Dart has the numbers for fixed route. It's more of a guess, right? We're estimating. And then, uh, Amanda, she did make, she did state, like she understands that the suburbs, what their outlook or what they're, what they're looking for, right? We're looking for equity, not, not every cent is accounted for and, and we see a cent of value, right? Like it doesn't need to be one-to-one, but it does need to be equitable. And that's something that I've reiterated as well. And I think that's the last one.
And Amanda's, uh, scheduled to come to your next meeting.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, and she'll get on Sunday hopefully as well, so.
And I think, uh, some things that I would add, Councilmember two is, as we think about, you know, withdrawal, there's some calculations. And I, I had heard Amanda was putting those numbers together of what it looks like. I think there's also, in the 2080, there's, and you know, if you saw it in Pleasant Hill's letter that was included in your correspondence tonight, there's a a liability that the leaving member has for any debt outstanding, uh, that Dart has that's attributable to that member based on population. Um, and so, uh, we don't know exactly what that number is, and that number would have to be payable through the, basically the city's funds. So that the Dart levy is a separate levy from ours. So there would be a city obligation to make that payback. I don't know exactly how the payments on that work. Haven't dug that far into the 2080 yet. I don't know if the 2080 even speaks that detail.
There, there are some things that Brick Gentry is, Rick Gentry is Dart's council and.
Putting that together.
Yeah, they're looking into putting that.
Cause they need you for, they need you for Grimes and Pleasant Hill, so.
May I suggest you have your own law firm look at it too, from our view.
Sure.
Because that firm is looking from their view, right? And you look at Elkhart and other cities that have already gotten out and what was their proportionate payback? I remember this thing and I, if I remember right, there was a very gray area, whether they even owed it or not. It was almost, it was more about what you owe to get back in. If you ever want to get back in was the difficult part, not the getting out. But to that point, it makes me want to write that letter today rather than in December, because would that liability start with the date the liability is taken on? Or if you're still in, but you've given your cancellation, you still get all those liabilities. There's the unknown question of if this barn is built, Des Moines gets out or somehow with their study, it doesn't work out in this whole thing. They're building this multi-million dollar barn, phase one and out of phase three. It's all paid by federal grants. Who owes those grants back to the federal, uh, government if it's right dissolved or defunct or something? And then before they start phase two and three, we don't want to be on the hook for that if this thing hasn't been worked out. What I will say is I was on Dart for, I think, 10 years. This discussion is nauseating. We've had it for 10 years and it's some different form. And so I'm still behind that December has to, that letter has to go out. Because there is no other carrot for them to, rather than those letters. If Des Moines does not step up.
Right.
Right.
The, the other thing just to mention here, um, you know, assuming we stay in and go forward, uh, with Pleasant Hill and Grimes withdrawing, assuming they don't reverse course in some way. There's going to be roughly $700,000 in additional costs that will need to be spread out across the, the remaining communities. For, for, you know, after the, after the one-time funding runs up and the withdrawals, they're no longer paying in.
Is that after the services are reduced in those communities?
That's my understanding right now, um, is that, yeah, it'll be after the, they'll stop paying once that official kick-in date goes in.
And also whether those communities still want to contract with Dart for paratransit.
So right now, the commission has not, so, um, can't remember if it was Grimes or Pleasant Hill, that one of them did ask if, if Dart would be willing to do paratransit.
Pleasant, I think it was in their Pleasant Hill.
Okay, yeah. So traditionally or historically, the commission hasn't done that. But that is for, as a potential discussion point.
I don't know why you wouldn't. I mean, it's just, you're just trying to stick it to them because they got out and get them with honey, right? And keep them in and closer. And I mean, that's my style, right? Is bait them in with honey.
Yeah.
And so, what is everybody laughing about? But keep them in. I mean, I don't think you stick it to the paratransit system and just because you're bitter that Grimes got out or Pleasant Hill got out. Contract with them and take their money, right? It's going to help your bottom line. They're out anyways. Don't, you know, don't be hurt about it.
It is something that we, you know, that the commission flags for discussion, but yeah, historically we haven't, the commission hasn't done that.
Might be the only thing Dart left.
The, the interesting thing about that for Pleasant Hill though, is that resources to pay that contract will have to come out of their own operating budget.
Yeah, I mean, that's their problem, right?
But they won't, but they won't be able to levy, levy separate. I think it's important to remember that as constraints are the state's putting constraints on the budgets. And I know that was part of Pleasant Hill, Pleasant Hill's reason, right? But the resources to come up with that payment for paratransit will have to come out of their general fund.
Because the million we're giving.
Is a separate levy technically. I'm not saying, again, it's all coming from the same taxpayers, right? But I'm just saying though, in terms of how they have to think about it too, going forward is that's got to come out of their budget. And, and their levy authority, not the separate levy.
And I am, I am speculating here, but I am wondering if that, if, if changing that precedent will have a knock on effect, right? Like all of a sudden, all the other suburbs are like, hey, that's all we want to, maybe we withdraw and just contract.
That's an interesting part of this.
Oh, yeah. But if, why not? If that's what they want or what they're asking for, then I think that's what they should get. That's the beauty of local control that our legislators don't believe in. Small rule and do what's best for your residents. And if the residents don't like it, they'll vote us out, right? And so anything else?
I'm sure I forgot something, but no, I, I think that's it for tonight.
I think you probably did. I got three phone calls the minute that commission was over. Chad, we'll move to you.
I'll be much quicker. Um, no offense. Icon Water Trails Board met on Tuesday. One of the things that brought, was brought before us was a contract for, um, some signage work of through a Bolton and Mink. And, um, you know, for, for some, some consistent signage for access points as well as the downtown recreational areas. Try to have a, a common look and feel for Icon. Of course, the challenge that you have with that is that each community has their own flavor on signage. And what I brought up as well was, oh, by the way, we also have ongoing projects, Greenboat Landing with an access point. And if we're, if our staffs are not coordinating, then, you know, we might have to redo signs and pull existing ones out, put new ones in, all those kinds of things. So, um, Richard met with, uh, the Icon folks, I think yesterday maybe. And so we've got some of that coordination going. And I, I think we should be in good shape for that going forward, but, um, but yeah, so, so we've got some, hopefully going to have some Icon, uh, access point signage of the Greenboat Landing, uh, that's going to be incorporated as well. So that's it.
And we've already had some email correspondence on that related to Greenbelt Landing, because you do have a, uh, Richard and the Smith Group team, and I've seen it, uh, we're going to, and we'll share that with you all. We're working on a signage template because of all the donor signage. So we do kind of have a consistency across the site. So we're kind of noodling on what we can do in terms of the access point. Is do we have maybe some signage up at the top? That's consistent with ours. And then another sign, I don't know, we we we're we're kicking around ideas and we need to talk with Bolton and make about.
It was something that their Icon staff had not really thought about was those ongoing projects.
Right.
And where they're at with their signage versus what Icons trying to do and trying to coordinate that with staffs across the metro. So I think they're now going to be incorporating that.
Blood, name, and and they were one of them in terms of their donor signage throughout the site we're working on.
That's it.
Eric.
Yeah, a couple of things. Uh, seven new business openings here in Clive, exciting to uh announce. Uh, one is a the only one of the few or only female owned doctors clinics for breast imaging. Uh, the mayor and I attended that ribbon cutting, so excited to have them here in Clive. Uh, also, Councilman Judkins and I attended the opening of Better Brains, which uh, interesting enough is a it's it's a kind of almost like a school or kind of a charter that folks tutoring for kids with advanced math and STEM and things of that nature. So excited to have them uh as well. Also catch Des Moines at a board meeting and we talked exclusively or not exclusively, but I brought up the the fact on on how we'd like them to be more of a partner with us uh in building coalitions, uh, talking about some of the mandates and some of the the tax policies uh on statewide legislation. So continuing to you know, talk about the theme we've had, we've talked about the grid and more partnership to reemphasize that there is a shifting tide right here and and uh, uh, you know, we'd like to see more out of uh our contributions as far as their assistance with some statewide legislation. With that, uh, the city manager and I attended the annual celebration. I'm glad to share this with with everyone. And uh, we've got a video that Pete, if you'll play with us.
You are the master of videos.
Musical number, as Jonah mentioned.
We like to collaborate.
I like it. We have to read lips?
One moment.
Yeah, let's start it again with.
What happened there? Are you shaving some money on the audio or?
I don't know. Technical difficulty.
Think it might be low on the video, Pete, in the lower right-hand corner.
You see something?
Yeah, right there. Yep.
There you go.
Try that. All right, hopefully I don't blow everybody's ears out here.
Get ready for loud.
It's too much.
It's too much. Apologies, I think we'll have to just circulate this one using the website.
They do make good video. They do do good videos. You don't even need to know it. You don't need.
Great visual effects right here. It really tells the story.
They do a good job.
Pete can send that out, but you guys get, you guys get the gist of it. Well-made, really, since we did a catch Des Moines, did a uh utilized Flynn, right? We've really noticed and, you know, I can get into this if anybody wants a copy of this, but two point eight billion and generated in Poconales counties. You know, eighteen thousand plus jobs, so they're really hitting on all cylinders. They just need to help us out a little bit with some bar needs on a statewide tax legislation, so. That's all, Mayor.
Was there another ribbon cutting that you and Susan attended?
Uh, Better Brains.
Grab another one.
Another one grabbed on a bridge.
Oh, that's right. Yes, yes. Uh, the mayor and Susan and I also attended uh uh, the ribbon cutting, thank you, uh, of Indian, uh, of Indian Hills, uh, Woods. Uh, what a tremendous time to see that 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 trail. And then we've worked on this for a couple of years. So really with the bridge and the walkway and the landscaping, very glad to see that project uh come into fruition. So very well attended by the neighborhood too. I encourage everyone, if you get a chance, walk through there. It looks great.
Did Mr. Carter join you?
He did not.
It was pretty with the trees changing too, with the leaves changing.
It was a great, great event.
Yep.
Thanks for being there. Matt's already mentioned some of the multiple meetings we've had with partnership uh folks. And as Matt indicated, I think we're making good progress, so. More to come on that.
And they will also be here um uh to present to you on the your November fourteenth meeting. Kind of the ROI we talked about particularly related to economic development. So they have asked and we have them on the schedule to come in November.
Is that movement with uh the partnership coincide with the disinviting Pete and I to the meetings or um or at least you've been invited, you were the bomb. You got invited and I didn't.
I'm a nice guy.
What? That's not what they said downtown.
Okay, we're not going to go there tonight.
And if you haven't had a chance, uh, the Metro Mayor's met at Colby Park last night. And if you haven't had a chance to see it, I think it's it's worth worth a trip over. One of the things, Richard, that they have added are plugs uh for uh food trucks, which I thought was very interesting. That way they don't have a noise and everything. They just plug in. So that's cool. Yeah, I thought that was that was a neat addition. And there, it was a three point one million dollar project over there, again, with the dual towers of climbing towers and splash pad and everything else, so.
It's impressive from the interstate.
Yeah, yeah, it's and if you look at it from above, it's in the form of a leaf.
When you're flying in from the airport.
Yeah, if you're flying in from the airport.
Actually, you kind of go over that.
When you're driving two thirty-five, just focus on that.
Or just take a drone over there.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's what you need to do.
I'm sure there'll be some drone videos for sure.
I'm sure there'll be. I'm sure there'll be. But anyway, Susan.
Well, I sent out a couple of pictures from stopping by the Fire Prevention Week at the Harbach Center last night. It was great to see great attendance from both our fire departments and Windsor Heights, got to meet their Dalmatian dog. So anyway, it was great to see that. On the homeless coordinating council front, there are a couple of offshoots that are happening. One is the mandated governance committee, which I'll be part of, and we're meeting on Tuesday. And they're also going to start undertaking a five-year strategic plan. And I just got asked to be part of that as a person to represent the suburbs. And Chris Coleman will be on there to represent Des Moines. It's mostly community people. I mentioned David Stark before from Unity Point, he's on there. I don't know if that's because of his role with partnership, maybe, or if it's because of Unity Point, just a lot of leaders from the community. So it's exciting to see that kind of participation on that topic. So I'll keep you updated.
Good. Anything else?
That's it.
Michael. I do not have a report. Unless the report is WRA spending, you know, ten billion dollars on every vote they do. There is no report.
Well, thank you very much.
Legal counsel?
Uh, one item to report, Mr. Mayor celebrated his fortieth work anniversary at Drake Law School this week. So congratulations to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Means you're really old.
It goes without saying.
Legendary, legendary. Thank you. That's all.
Right.
Just two items, Your Honor, tonight. Uh, just a reminder of the Greenbelt Landing groundbreaking uh next Wednesday at four. And it looks like the weather is like it has been for the last number of weeks going to cooperate with us and uh um, we look forward to having that. Uh, DCI and crew are getting everything set up and our communications team, along with leisure services team, will have a nice a nice little afternoon there and get some some TV cameras out there as well, hopefully. And then just a reminder too, as we get into November, that first Thursday in November, on November seventh is when we'll have the CIP workshop that we have every year. And uh, location, maybe here, maybe at the training uh uh room over at uh, public safety. We'll have food like we normally do because we know that's a pretty long night uh to go through a lot of the uh capital infrastructure uh projects for uh staff level, really digging in on that here over the next couple of weeks. So we'll have that on November seventh. So that's all I have, Your Honor, unless there's questions.
Questions from Matt. Anything else for the good of the order this evening? Seeing none, we'll adjourn at eight nineteen.